Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather together. We ask for your presence over this meeting. And we ask you for your continued blessings for our community, for our businesses, for our churches, and for our families. Father, we pray for wisdom and compassion. As you are compassionate, help us to be compassionate. And we pray for decency. As a community, as we strive to do well, let us also strive to do good. Father, we pray for peace. Peace in your world, peace in this community, and peace in each of our hearts. Let us be the peace we want to see in the world. We ask for these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting of the November 6th, Fergus Falls City Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
Ray Meyer.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum. First item this evening is approval of the agenda, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, council members. I don't have any changes or additions to the agenda, but I believe Councilmember Rachel's wanted to add one item.
I do, Your Honor. I'd like to put on the end before if we someplace a new business about, talk about the golf course.
Anyone have any objections to that?
I have no objections, and I have something I'd like to add as well, if you could. I'd like, so we review the flyer insertion on the city utility bill. I think that's something we should talk about.
Yep. I'm just going to address it during the discussion.
Okay, thanks. As long as we get the opportunity to talk about it.
Yep.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Sure. And if you want to add anything, you're certainly welcome to do that.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? The motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, and there are no bids to award under petitions, communications, and open forum. At this time, we will have our open forum. Anyone from the public wishing to address the council regarding any matter that's not on the agenda, feel free to do so at this time. Anyone here to talk about the franchise fees will have an opportunity to talk during that time. So if you're here to talk about that, be patient, we'll make sure you get an opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak to any item that's not on the agenda?
Mark Leighton.
Good evening, Mr. Leighton.
Yep. South of the water plant road facility that I own, the property owners to the south have requested from the city various times over the last three to five years that that culvert gets fixed as it continues to wash out their driveway. I know the city's been out there many times, drawing circles on the road. I would like to see it be put on a priority. Again, I'm speaking on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? See no one, we will move along to the consent agenda. This evening, we have nine items for consideration. They're on the board, they're also in our packet. Anyone wishing to speak to any of these items individually? See none?
Make a motion to approve.
Resolution to approve the consent agenda. Second, Mr. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Ray Meyer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, there are six items for consideration this evening relating to franchise fees and franchise agreements. Before we get to that, I guess I just wanted to start that conversation by just referencing the handout that was in the utility insert, just acknowledging it was unfortunate that they went out. It did not accurately reflect the stage of the process that we're in, it shouldn't have gone out. As mayor, I'll take full responsibility for that. But I do think it gives us an opportunity to have a discussion that we've been trying to have regarding franchise fees for quite some time. As much as we've attempted to get the information out to people back over a year now, human nature often, until it's going to affect somebody, that's when they, that's when we're able to discuss, to get their attention. We obviously have the attention of the public now, and I think we need to take the opportunity. I've heard from people that because of this flyer, it was the first time they'd heard the discussion of franchises. That's unfortunate, but it's the reality of the situation. We now have the attention of the public, I think we should take the opportunity. Because there have been a number of options and ideas that have been considered over the past several weeks. Anything from reducing to 3%, to stepping it in over a course of years, having a flat fee, having a sunset, a number of options. I think we should consider those. I think we have time to consider those. There's also the issue of utility rates. If we're gonna, if we are going to adopt franchise fees, we're going to significantly increase the funding to streets. We're also going to have increased utility underneath those streets and infrastructure needs. I think we need to have that conversation as part of what a increase in, what a franchise fee would be. And finally, I think there's been discussion, questions, and rightfully so, about what streets get done and how do those streets get chosen. There's been ideas about forming, you know, having some sort of citizen involvement in that committee, but clearly identifying what a franchise fee would raise, what streets would get done. I think there's time. So back to, you know, back to the initial comment on the flyer, it doesn't accurately represent where we're at in the process, and I'll say this, there is no timeframe on this decision. There's no predetermined outcome. We have the time to do it, and I think I propose that we take some time to do it right and consider all the options that have come over the past several weeks. And I would suggest that we do that through asking staff to consider some of the multiple scenarios that we've seen, put that together, along with utility rates, along with a list of what streets could be done, how that would be determined, and take the time to get this right. Because we don't have an obligation to do this under any time, but we do, I think, have the obligation to do it right. So that's what I would suggest that we do, we take the time to consider some of these ideas and concepts as a whole.
Your Honor, I'll make that motion. Do we, do you want to call it postpone, or postpone, I guess, the decision we make on this, or the process we're going to make?
I do think we need to make a decision, but we need to take the time.
Yeah, and we could, I'll, I'll make the motion, somebody's second, and we can discuss it somewhere else.
Does the motion someone like to second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. So, Jim?
I have a question. We still need to have the first three items on there done tonight?
No.
Is that correct? We don't need?
They can be all done at the same time.
Okay, very good.
These franchise agreements are in place already.
Okay.
And they'll just continue on with the, with the old agreements. Those are just long-term agreements, old agreements. But that'll, my...
That'll go along with, with the franchise.
Yeah, you just group all six of them together and push it out.
Scott?
I think what maybe leads to that question is that, my understanding was that two of them, two of the agreements had essentially expired. So we just continue to operate under the existing agreement until it's replaced, but it isn't under any sort of deadline still.
No. As I said, these are long-term agreements. These agreements have been in place for like 20 years, and so they just continue.
So it's sort of a soft expiration, in a way. Okay.
And whether the council ultimately votes a franchise fee up or down, these can be acted on at that time.
Correct.
They're not, they don't need to be.
I'd like to go back to the kind of the flyer. Kind of in, in my world, you know, something like that, which obviously, you know, put in people, you know, at the open house we had, you know, there was a lot of comment about this being a foregone conclusion, that, you know, this was all kind of, you know, going to happen anyway, you know, regardless of, of public input. And then when we publish a piece of paper that says, you know, this is happening, and it's, you know, it's, it's there, I think that, you know, we would classify that as a, what we call a cardinal rule, that's doing something that's, you know, against kind of company policy, and, and this would be, I think, in that classification. And I would like to see probably the HR committee to review and come up with a policy. Like, if we're going to make statements that are on behalf of the council, I think it needs more than one person to look at it, because somebody should be held accountable when something goes out that's incorrect like that. You know, it put the council in a very difficult place because people just assumed then that it's going to be a rubber stamp. And I think that I would like to make a motion that, you know, the HR committee review the process of what went wrong, and then report back to the council the finding of how can we do that better so this doesn't happen again, if somebody would like to second it.
Second. Sounds good. So we're gonna, I think for, we have a motion, but we'll take that.
Okay.
Soon as we vote, we have a motion and second already lined up, so we won't have to, other, other comments before we?
Yeah, I guess so too. I, I think with what Anthony said, that Thursday night was a very valuable night for everyone. Those council members who were here got to hear from the people, and Mr. Patrick Lundberg is the one that I think about. He listed all the fees that he's got to cover before he can even turn a profit. And I think a lot, a lot of businesses are that way. Most businesses are that way. But as the comment was, this has already been decided. And then this comes out into the city utility bill. I opened mine, I usually don't open it. I heard about it, so I opened it on the 2nd of November, and I was livid when I read that. I thought, really? This is major damage control right now. And I'm not the one that's going to do the damage control, because I agree with Patrick. I agree with many of you citizens on this. And that's where we're at. We've got to figure out what happened here, because it looked really, really bad for the Council of Fergus Falls to have this go out into the, into the utility bills. I mean, that was a conscious thing to have done, that this paper went out. And now we got to figure out, okay, what happened? I think somebody else has a question.
Yeah, we're going to let the public, just want to make sure, let the council, and then we're going to open up to the public before we take the vote, on the proposal to delay the conversation till we can have some more information. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what is meant by a conscious effort, me, if that implies some kind of malice. I, I do not believe that that is the case. I, I believe a mistake was made, and I'd like to find any one of us that doesn't make mistakes all day long. And, I mean, yes, this mistake happened to have significant impact, but also, it's nothing that we can't sit down and talk about. And like, you know, like the mayor said, that it, you know, as unfortunate as the circumstance is, it opened a lot of people's eyes to the discussion that we all need to have. But, you know, a mistake was made, and we all make mistakes, I make mistakes all day long, and I try to learn from them. I think the suggestion of reviewing our process is a good one, to make sure that the messages that go out reflect, you know, what messages the city wants to send. But, you know, remember that before you cast the first stone, that, that we're all human, and humans make mistakes, and we can learn from this, and we can move on, and, perhaps because this occurred, it, it will make our discussion that much more inclusive.
Thanks, Tom. Any other comments?
I just think that the, you know, the mayor, they, we knew we made a mistake, and we admitted it. We got on it right away. We weren't trying to cover anything up. We just did it, we knew it was wrong. I wasn't, I seen it, and I thought, something's not right. So anyway, we just need to, I'm talking now. We need to continue on working on this, and I just, from that Thursday night meeting, you know, we talked about different people, that we need some solutions. If they don't, we don't like the, the franchise fee, then we need another solution, because we're going to have to fix these roads. And so we've been, we're way, everybody's open to it, and I just look forward to working with it.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Did you have another comment, Mr. Kramer?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Yeah.
On, coming back to the franchise fee, which is kind of obviously, I, I think, you know, for me, I would like to see us, you know, like tailor this in, and, and, you know, if we were going to go ahead with kind of, I'm not sure now, tonight, what we're really going to talk about, because we're not, we're just going to have a general conversation about franchise fees, I think. But my suggestion would be that we go down a road of stepping up, that the first year would be 3%, 4%, then 5%, that we form a committee that should have at least two, two council members on it, and then obviously engineering, and, and probably then a third party, you know, to help decide where that money should be spent, on, on what roads. And then I think we should put a sunset on it, or review five years out, so that we come back and look at it and say, did we actually, what money did we collect, and what did we do, and did we actually make any impact? Some of us attended a meeting last week that was put on by the county on looking at grants and funding from not just the state, but also from the feds and from the USDA. And there was a lot of opportunities potentially in that for leveraging the money that we do collect. And I think, you know, that's something that, you know, we also need to look into, is like, if we're going to collect this money, can we leverage that to get us more dollars? And some of, some of the roads that they gave example on, you know, you didn't need a matching amount for, depended on traffic, you know, depended on obviously the scenario of kind of like that project. But, you know, in general, the consensus was, if you did matching funds, you know, or you, you put some contribution in, you know, you gain points in terms of getting allocation. And I think that that's kind of a bigger picture of, if we're going to try to get, you know, as many roads or as many miles of road fixed as we possibly can, then we've got to get smarter about how we use the money, as opposed to just, you know, repairing the road and thinking that we can be loners out here, when the state has got all these programs that are out there, we just don't know about them. And it's like, and, I mean, the USDA said they have like 75 different programs, and in fairness, I don't know how anybody could keep 75 programs in their head to know which ones are the best programs. But the, the staff that were there from the various agencies seemed very open to, you know, if you've got a project, you know, you could pretty much ring them, and they would give you the, some, some at least interpretation of whether it was possible or, or not. I think, and you were there, Ben, as well, so you might be able to add to that, but I think it was, it was definitely a useful meeting to go to, and it opened my eyes to that there's funds out there that we just didn't even know about. And I think that, that's where I see this, you know, because at, at the end of the day, I think there's not a single person up here that did not run on a ticket that we were going to help fix roads. And we can go on and about, like, how did they get to this point? Well, we've been, you know, since I've been on the council, we've been, you know, I've, you know, talking about every year, trying to get more and more funds, and more and more funds to fix more and more roads. And, you know, we're torn between the devil and the deep blue sea, because we don't want to put taxes up, but we can't fix roads without money. And, and I think that's kind of where we have to sort of sit back down and say, we want to fix roads. And, you know, that is the biggest cry that I get from the citizens that I talk to, is, you know, when are you going to fix my road? And, you know, I mean, even like this year, you know, roads get pushed off, you know, because, you know, it's, there's also, there's not enough people sometimes to even bid on it. So I think that, I would like to see us be more holistic about using this money to get more out of it.
Thanks, Anthony. I think you make some really good points. I think we can have that as part of the discussion. We talked about that this morning here at City Hall, how to simply say in a million dollars gets you one mile of road isn't, isn't the full picture. It's how you leverage those funds with state and federal opportunities, and stack funding and stuff. I think that could be part of the conversation as well. And then the, the other thing is, I think it's, I think it's imperative that we look at utility rates, and what, what increased funding to roads is going to do to them, and have that as part of the conversation, so we don't come back and have those as separate conversations. Scott?
I think to add a little bit to what Anthony had to say about that meeting last week with the Attail County, one of the points that was made was that if you're going to ask for money, you're going to be in the best position if you've got your project together, basically. If you've got your stuff in a pile, if you've got a defined project, and you've got an idea of the scope of it, and that's well-defined, your chances of getting that funding is greatly improved. And in our last, over the course of the last year, one of the suggestions that's been made, and one of the questions that's been raised very often, is, you know, not so much when are you going to fix the roads, but when are you going to fix what road, and which road, and what order, and what's the priority? And there's been a question basically around more specifics, wanting to have, well, some call it transparency, as to when you're going to get to this, and when you're going to get to that. And we've got a capital improvement plan, but it doesn't have that kind of detail in it. And we've got suggestions and ideas from people, and again, it doesn't have that kind of level of, it hadn't been figured out to that point. And I don't know, you know, what it would take to get to that point. I mean, the staff does all they can do to keep up with what we've got going on right now. But that's a big piece of trying to get this other money, is we can go and ask USDA or anybody else for money, but unless we've got a defined project, we're probably not going to have a lot of success. So that might be one of the things that we've got to get ahead of the cart, so to speak.
And how do we determine what those projects are? I think there's a lot of questions, but I agree with both of you, that that needs to be part of the larger conversation that we have. I don't think we have it, again, there's no timeframe on this. We can, we have the time to look into how we get that, how we get that right, so. I know there's people who want to speak to this, so we're going to vote on this, but I'll, I'm going to allow the public to speak to the franchise fees if they're here to speak to that before we vote, so. I, floor is yours. Al?
More for Rolf. You know, looking at the ordinance and resolutions here, you know, the first three franchise agreement, the next three are franchise fee. And I know that the other ones were already there, but there was some confusion, I think, at that one meeting, and I think we need to make this very clear. What is, explain the difference between the fee and the agreement.
Okay. There's a memo that was included in the packet, so I encourage the public to look at it. A franchise agreement sets forth the rules, regulations, that private utilities must follow when you're placing their utilities in our right-of-way. So if they tear up a road, they have to replace it. If you put an electrical line out and someone gets electrocuted, they indemnify and hold the city harmless. These are very important agreements, agreements to have, and, and we do these like every 20 years or so. They're long-term agreements. And so the franchise agreement is an important document. It requires the utility to map the location, so we know where their, where their lines are. And so we got to have that in place. That's a good thing for everyone. The franchise fee, on the other hand, is, is, is what everyone's talking about. And the franchise fee is what we charge, or whether we charge the utility for using the public right-of-way. Now, granted, it sounds like, yeah, we would charge the utility X amount to put their utilities in our, in the public right-of-way, but what they do is they pass that fee on to the customer. And so these pass-through fees are, we've, we've heard from the utilities, they will pass it on to the customer, and that's the question that's before this council, is whether that is something that you wish to do or do not wish to do. There's no right or wrong answer here. And that, yeah?
Yeah, just, I'll let you finish.
Oh. There's no right or wrong answer to, to whether you engage a franchise fee, and it's up to the council to gauge the, their constituents, you know, whether this is something they're, they want, if, whether they resist this, it's up to the council to make that decision. And so this is a good discussion to have, but they're, they're different. You can have one without the other. You can have a franchise agreement without the franchise fee, but you can't have a franchise fee without the franchise agreement. So, so, I mean, I just want to make it clear, is that, is that one action involves something we should have, and that's, that protects the city from the utility putting, utilizing the public right-of-way. But it's a completely different question whether or not we should charge them for that, and they'll pass that, that expense on to the public. That's, that's the question I think everyone's here to talk about.
And, if I may speak?
Please.
That's why I wanted to make it crystal clear now, because, you know, there was a little bit of confusion there that other day, when it was talked about, you said it's already in place. And I understand a, an agreement, and I understand what a tax is, and, but I don't think some of the others did. And I think we needed to get that, get that out there, because you were telling me that's already in, I do understand that, but I don't think some of the others did.
Yeah. I mean, as I said, these are long-term agreements. We've had franchise agreements with charter communication, we have spectrum, telephone companies, when they're around, we had, we had, you know, franchise agreements with them. And it's just a private, private utility utilizing the public right-of-way, and that's where the agreement comes in place. But the fee is different. We've never had a fee.
So can I ask a question then? Why, when, why can't we proceed with these three tonight, in the sense of the word, to get them off the table, and then that clarifies that any future kind of discussion about franchise fees is not muddied in the water with an, an agreement and then a franchise fee agreement?
You can.
I mean, I think the, I think the, the idea just is that because there has been confusion, if, why, why, why muddy the waters any further? When we, when the council takes action up or down on whatever proposed franchise fee?
I almost think, I kind of agree with Anthony. I almost think it would be clarified a little bit easier if the franchise agreement is taken care of tonight, and then the franchise fee is still out there. Then we know exactly, hey, this has already been out there for 20-some years, whatever, it's okay, we have to do it, it, you know, it holds the city harmless, let's get rid of that, let's take care of that, and then let's deal with this franchise tax.
The fact that we've had the discussion here now, if the people are clear, if it's clear, clear with people, that's fine with me. Scott, are you fine with men in your motion?
Hold on.
In your, motion in your second?
Yeah.
Sounds good. It's just the last three, four, five, and six, I'm voting on here, sure.
Except for the fact that in the terms of the agreement, it says, for example, I'll read it, "The fee shall be a percentage of gross revenue." So it defines it as a percentage. So if we chose some other method, flat rate or something, then the agreement has got to be redone. So I don't know that it's wrong to just do these all as a group. I think that we can make it clear. But if it's going to be spelled out one way or the other in the agreement, we probably need to wait. That would be my suggestion.
Well, we're just introducing him tonight, and I think that now that we have the motion change, we'll introduce him tonight. If there's questions, people can decide if they want to take the second vote at the time that we vote on franchise fees, or if we can do it in two weeks.
If, if, well, either that, or if you wanted to just introduce him tonight and then delay the, the final vote until you have, you know, a final discussion on the fees, too. You can do it.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I don't, yeah, go ahead. I don't want to make that any more confusing. Okay, we're going to vote on that issue, but first, I'm going to give the public an opportunity to please step to the lectern and state your name and address the council.
Council members, mayor. My name is John Strock. I live at 519 West Fass Avenue. And I know, Mr. Ruffer, I'd be the first to admit that, yeah, we all make mistakes. Sometimes those mistakes are small, and we can work through it. Sometimes they're a little bit bigger, or they're more involved, and then it's not so easy to deal with that mistake. When we got these sent out to us, if you read it, it says, "Franchise fees in effect March 2024. City of Fergus Falls will begin adding 5% franchise fees on utility gas and electric beginning in March 24." That's pretty clear that this is saying it's going to happen. And, excuse me, somebody needs to be responsible to say, okay, you don't send this out unless you proofread it, and whoever proofreads it should realize that's not acceptable, especially after the meeting we had with the public, and everybody was saying, is this a done deal? Because a lot of times, things have happened that way. And I would like to bring to your attention, well, as Mr. Ruffer said there, we've had it with charter and different things, but that's optional. Not everybody has to have charter. So if you don't have charter, you don't get that franchise tax or that fee added to you. This is every citizen that lives in the city of Fergus Falls and gets natural gas and electric. So you don't have a choice in the matter. And I'd like to bring to your attention that residents pay assessments on street improvements And I'd like to bring to your attention that residents pay assessments on street improvements in front of their homes anytime anything is done, whether it's a small item or they tear it apart and have to redo it. There's an assessment that is brought to each person's home. And now you want to add a franchise fee, which is a tax, to the people of Fergus Falls to add to that. And people who don't live in the city, they can come to our town and they can drive down any street they want, and they're not paying any assessment, they're not paying any franchise tax. There's no cost to them. So why do the citizens of this town get punished? And they are responsible for all these fees and, and this expense. Many of the city staff doesn't even live in Fergus Falls, whether or not that's an issue or not, but they choose to live outside of the city. Is that because of all the taxes, or is there other reasons? We don't know. But $1.3 million you're claiming you're going to get from this. If you look at your budget, you can cut areas spending, and you can come up with that $1.3 million. I'd be willing to bet on it, and I'm sure there's other people that'd be more than willing to work with you to come up with that. We need to look at what you guys are spending and figure out a way to take care of these streets and these issues without going after the citizens for more taxes. That's the bottom line, and that's what I think people are upset about. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Strock. And just remind people too, that there will be, you're, you're more than welcome to speak tonight. There will be opportunities as we go through this process that we've outlined this evening as well, so, just, just to make sure the public is aware of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff, and community gathered here tonight. My name is Patrick Lundberg. I stand here as the majority owner and co-founder of Outstate Brewing Company, and I'm aiming to shed light on the formidable challenges we have confronted as a local business. While our narrative is distinct, it embodies a reality shared by many. Our journey has been akin to walking a precarious tightrope between survival and closure. Our working capital vanished as we were focused, or forced, I should say, to shutter our doors. The harsh reality is that Outstate Brewing Company will be grappling with the aftermath of arbitrary government mandates for years to come. Operational expenses, including natural gas and electricity, have surged dramatically, and all input costs have followed suit. The proposed 5% franchise fee on energy costs further impacts our financial burdens. The $1.3 million these franchise fees are projected to generate for our streets falls far short of the actual need, or at least that was my understanding as of the meeting last week. It feels akin to applying a small bandage to an arterial bleed, a token gesture that doesn't belong in the serious work of managing a city budget. I urge a multifaceted approach that begins with fiscal responsibility. We should undertake a thorough review of excessive expenditures and budget trimming as a first step toward a meaningful proposal. We cannot simply accept the assertion that all services will be cut if we look at trimming the budget. Broad, general absolutes tend to obscure the truth of the matter. I firmly believe there is a way to reduce the budget without dramatic assertions. It's important that we look at our reputation as an environment to attract new business. While we tout ourselves as a business-friendly community, historical barriers have often impeded our progress. In our case, the case of Outstate Brewing Company, we were denied a city facade improvement loan due to complications arising from government-mandated COVID-19 shutdowns. While we received an IRP loan to support equipment costs, the mandated shutdowns disrupted our ability to meet loan payments on time, resulting in our disqualification for facade improvement funds. This denial, through no fault of our own, vividly underscores inconsistencies in the support provided to businesses in Fergus Falls. This is a snapshot of our experience concerning the business-friendly environment here in Fergus. However, I believe it is the consensus of the broader business community that a continued increase in taxes does not foster a business-friendly environment. Outstate Brewing Company has played an important role in our community, attracting visitors and helping them see Fergus Falls as a destination rather than a mere pass-through city. The prognosis for outstate survival is tenuous at best. Adding a larger tax burden on an already overtaxed business could be the final nail. Last year, Minnesota saw a net loss of thousands of residents, in my view, over taxation and unpopular policy on a state level. I would urge the mayor and the city council not to follow suit. We will not garner more small, small business under the thumb of more taxation. In conclusion, I extend my gratitude for your time, and I mean that. Your dedication, I mean that, and commitment to our community. Your roles often are thankless, I know, but they're integral to our local governance, and I commend your involvement. My responsibility is to support the council's decisions when appropriate and to raise questions when the trajectory seems detrimental to our community's well-being. I advocate for constructive dialogue devoid of ad hominem attacks and encourage each council member to uphold the same standard. I implore you to reconsider the proposed franchise fee and explore collaborative solutions. Our shared commitment to a flourishing local economy and community must guide our decisions, and I'm hopeful that we can arrive at a positive resolution that benefits Fergus Falls, our businesses, and residents. Thank you for your unwavering attention and support.
My name is Ken Heide, and I'm a new resident to Fergus Falls for the last year and a half. I got to say, when I got this in the mail, I kind of laughed, plausible laughter, because half of Minnesota cities collect a franchise fee. Whatever happened to lead and let everybody else follow? Why do you have to be like everybody else? Okay? It just, it blows my mind. When I seen this, I thought, this is ridiculous. And I agree, it should have never went out. Nonetheless, there it is. To me, this looks like a ticket for general fund money. That's what I read. It's ridiculous, no different than the tree limb disposal program of $2.50. So big deal, right? I don't know if the streets, you know, Works Department deals with that, but evidently they don't. I'm here to talk to you that, in my job, I work in the federal government, I write national policy for Medicare and Medicaid services. Okay, I write the rules for the country. I sit with five other people. When we look at rules, we look at a couple of different things. One of the factors that we look at, is it reasonable, necessary? Is it medically necessary? And is a program operating need? We don't go to Congress and say, give us money, we're going to fix this. We look at the scope of what we're trying to do. You can't tell me that Fergus Falls is within the scope of taking care of its residents, because it's not. How many programs do we have out there that we don't need? You know, why are we trying to fund everything? We don't have to do that. So all I'm saying is when you look at this stuff, when you look at, and I, I was in Detroit Lakes, I've sat on boards and been all over the place. When my neighbors come to me and say, don't ask questions because nobody cares, this is from my neighbors, I'm a, I'm a new, you know, new person here. But when I look at my utility bills, when I look at all these different things that I see from the city, I, you have to question it. Are we really focused on a program operating need, or are we just going to go out there and throw money at things? There's money out there, you know you can cut programs. Who says we have to follow the rest of it? This thing was laughable, you know, we got to be like everybody else. Where the hell does it say that? I can't do that at my job. You guys surely shouldn't do that at your job. We leave, let other people look at us, come up with solutions to problems, okay? That's all we're asking. If there's got to be a franchise fee, and the way this thing was written, I still don't understand that. I, I think in government services with all the different programs that we fund out there, there's money out there. Just have to look and start cutting programs. What's wrong with the word no? Did you not see the billboard that were posted all over here with the governor? He had cranial rectal inversion. Do you remember all that? Yet I look around and I think, well, because the governor says something, or somebody else says something, or another city's doing it, we got to follow suit? I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that. All the places I live, I don't agree with it. So you can't tax being a prosperity, so stop. Just stop. Look at what we're paying. And you just, it's getting to the point now where it's ridiculous. And I, I don't attend meetings very much, especially government meetings, but I can tell you in my job, we have to look at several different factors and find out what's reasonable, necessary, is it medically necessary, and is our program operating need for? Quit trying to finance everything. The city has a core value, stick to the core values. That's all I'm asking. But learn the word no. If you need help, I'll be glad to spell it for you. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Heide.
Lori Mullin, 2840 Lakewood Drive. Ken, you made a good point. The flyer said 50% of the cities. How many cities do we have in Minnesota?
I don't know, there's, I think there's 840 some.
So anybody that knows me knows that I do a little bit of research. So it's not half of the cities that do this. 350 some, and most of them were bigger communities. I don't know who we're modeling this after, but one of my concerns is when I was looking at some of these cities that were doing this, that wasn't being used just for road infrastructure, they were also including energy updates. People that needed new furnaces and windows, and the utility companies were running programs, and then that was being built into the, the utility fees coming back to the cities. So just making that point, knowing that, I hope that we're not going to allow that. I think the other thing that was mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I think Bill mentioned that our, all the tipping fees and utility rates were going to have an increase coming up, and so I propose that in the city's transparency that they take three levels of housing. I was looking at some real estate and, you know, kind of a average price of house right now is 170. You've got the 270, and then you've got some of these new builds that are at 350, 370. So let's take those three levels. Let's say that there's a, it's a five-person household, and if you could give us what the utility increase was going to be from the city on average. We also have the school district coming forward, asking for an increase of funding so they can complete their, the target building, and that's not something that's going to even come before the voters. The school district is asking for the new school, and they had some proposed increases there. And so for this 170, 270, and 370, let's take what it, would also cost if the street was being improved, and there was going to be special assessments to a homeowner. Then you add on to that what the city increase is going to be, and the county increase, and let's see if we can't get a more accurate picture of what this is going to look like next year for somebody. Yeah, I don't think that people really understand the total impact, and it would be nice to know if you have a $270,000 house on a street that's going to get improvements and have the special assessments, plus what the county is proposing and the school district is proposing, it gives us a better idea. Comment that was made at the last open forum was, someone said, well, let's just talk about the franchise fee, and it doesn't matter what anybody else thinks about any other budgets in the city. Well, there are places that can be cut. And a perfect, perfect example is this build bigger, build better, the big build, and the city giving $500,000 to houses that are homeowners that are putting up a $1.8 million house. What kind of money have we expended in the last three years on that? What do we plan to expend in the next two years on that? There's things like that where the, the budget can be, be cut, because that's, it's a, that's just a waste of money. And you guys don't, this doesn't operate in a vacuum, you have to take the total picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Dwayne?
Mayor, councilman. My question, or my perception, I guess, I saw that this came in the mail as well. But earlier, it was the assessment for Stanton Avenue, and it was a single page that was sent out. And I was a bit concerned because, you know, it just, limited people probably on Stanton got the assessment. But it was due at the end of the month, and it was over $6,000. And so I went up there, and I'm just like, I have a question? And they go, oh, no, there was a two-page. And on the, on the second page, it was crossed out 24. I haven't seen a correction of that yet. And that was brought out. And I'm in full support of these comments. It's like, we're not working together. It really doesn't feel, as a resident of Fergus Falls, that you're working for us. With these franchise fees agreements, we heard that about charter, okay? I don't see that. I don't see that on, okay? Arby's coming through. Railroads cross those roads. Anything that touches those roads must have an agreement.
True. True, an agreement, yes. But we don't charge fees with charter primarily, I think, is because we can't. Because of their, it's dealt with communications. And when we used to have telephone, I think their lobbyists, from what I understand, we can't charge a franchise fee with, associated with those utilities, only with gas and, and electricity.
Kind of cable, but not internet.
What?
Kind of cable, but not telephone.
Right, right.
Rolf, could you speak up to the, in the microphone? I, I can hardly hear you.
Yeah. Okay.
What about railroad?
No, because railroad owns their land. We crossed their, the railroad right-of-way. Back in the 1800s, railroads were given large swaths of, of property, and, and they, they own their land.
And we actually pay a fee for our sewer lines to go under the railroad, right?
There was a... With the school, I, I see, we see piecemeal. Okay, when they did the Lincoln School, they did the high school, is there a five- or 10-year plan? Because this school just didn't come out of anywhere, this new school that they're doing. And I grew up in this town, I went to Adams, and I'm just like, I'm a firm believer of having the smaller schools, because we had Jefferson, Eisenhower, you know, all the different ones. Well, majority were, we walked to school. Okay? What's it going to cost to transport these kids all over town, busing? So you're talking about these, the finances of just for the school, but on the heels of it, it's like, okay, now we got to have more buses. Are we going to bus them more? What's the true cost? What's the plan? Al had a very good town meeting the other day. Al had a very good town meeting the other day. And just inspiring when he brings these people in. It truly is. Kenny Nelson and his story from Permian. And it was about bringing the community together, getting the champions, if you will. And what are you gonna work on next? Bring it out. And look what Perm has done. And it was David Henjel, or Henkel?
Henkel.
Henkel, from Greater Bemidji. I used to live in that area, in Sawway. And we left in '05. And what they've done, it was, in '05, '06, it was devastating. Potlatch moved out. When Potlatch moved out, they hired, or they had hundreds of peoples. People couldn't sell their homes. They had to move away. They brought their keys into the bank and say, "There you go." They walked away from all their equity. And what they're doing now is phenomenal. They're bringing everybody together. And the biggest mistake they have right now, from what he said, is people are, wanna go outside the cities, outside the city. They don't get taxed. Was it 43% of the town?
Forty-three percent cannot collect, they can't collect property tax.
Can't collect property tax. But the creativeness of these people was just awe-inspiring. I wish everybody, I wish it had been, it was recorded?
No.
It should have been recorded. Like, it brings us back to the Stone Age here. These guys are inspirational. They know how to do this. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Mark Leighton. Not as eloquent as the previous speakers. I support the other people who have spoke tonight, spoke last week at the franchise meeting. I also support Mr. Hicks. I do not believe this was a mistake. I believe that the city council put this together before the meeting. Someone drafted it. Someone ordered it to be printed. That was done before last week. I too would like to see who designed it, ordered it, and suggested it be published. The franchise fee, let's talk about it. A million and three. You're indicating it should be just some thirty, forty dollars a person? I disagree. Because every time you go to a small shop in Fergus Falls, rent a facility in Fergus Falls, go to a grocery store, go to a gas station, go to a restaurant, specifically a restaurant, they use a lot of gas, electricity. They're gonna pass those fees right back onto you with higher menu prices. If you take the million and three, divide it by 14,000, multiply that times a family of four, possibly double it because of the local business that you trade with, this could be 300, 400, 500 dollars a year. On top of an average 70 dollar increase every year on real estate taxes because the city can't manage their spending. And if we talk about roads, if you were to redo all the roads and infrastructure, that would be 800 million dollars, talking to a few contractors. 800 million dollars. Now, just to make them butterly smooth, it would be 40 million. I don't care if you take 10% of that or 20% of it. That's a lot of money. Unfortunately, the councils in the future are unable to crawl back the money that has been spent over the last 10 years, as you well know, much unwisely. I don't have real numbers. Regional Treatment Center, 10 million. Convince the Center, 2 million. Over-engineered library, a couple million. Ice arena, a million. Riverfront, five, six, seven million. And now we're jumping into an aquatic center and a D-lagoon. These monies cannot be crawled back. The next council is gonna be wrapped with this budget. And this is the beginning of cutting the budget. And I agree with previous speakers. If you cut the budget, there will be no reduction in services. Fergus Falls already has some of the highest real estate taxes of communities our size. It's a given. This has been cultivated over the last 10, 12 years. And I think you can quite hear that the citizens are finally saying, "No more." There's a great deal of hard decisions to be made here. If this wasn't a city, and it was a company, it'd be broke. The city doesn't have an opportunity to tax. They have an opportunity to raise their prices. But if they raise their prices too much, they're gonna lose their customer base. And we're at the very beginning of that, at a very large scale, outside the Fergus Falls arena. So as I close, listen to these citizens. Make the hard decisions on this budget. I think we heard that the other day. Many of you weren't at the other town hall meeting with the Bemidji David, Greater Bemidji. You would have learned a lot. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Leighton.
Bob Knoll from Fergus Falls.
Hey, Bob.
This great meeting. The, the open house was great, too. We all joined in. Kind of upset right now. As Mr. Leighton was talking, I saw people laughing from the council. That was disgusting. The adversarial approach this city has towards its citizens. Instead of a collaborative one. So if you wanna work together with ideas, first thing you can do is stop laughing. Take us seriously. Open up channels so that these ideas can flow. I like what Councilman Rachel said last at the open house. We want ideas. Well, you gotta open up the channels. And when you guys shut down the town halls in this building right here, said we had bad audits. We've had about seven, eight of them. They've been great. That was a channel. That was your opportunity to come and listen. Some of you have never been there. Mr. Mayor, you weren't at the first one. You have things to do in the cities or wherever you were. And that's fine. You weren't at the open house either. That was your great opportunity to listen. And so you have to be willing to listen to the ideas, get the ideas. So you gotta open up the channels. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we have, um...
Can we, can any of the council speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
Thank you all for speaking tonight. And I can't remember your name, sir, from the federal government.
Mr. Ken Heide.
Ken. We, I believe, talked at M&amp;H this summer. Thank you for coming. Also, too, what I would like to see, maybe what we could do here, too, is we have people in this community, like I said the other night, that have God-given talents with great experience. To get them involved, just because we are an elected person doesn't mean we really know anything. I'll be honest with you. Listening is the number one key. And we need to listen tonight. Ken, thank you. All of you, thank you. And Sam, I love to see you here in the audience, too. A young guy like you, who's got a future and wants to do well in Fergus Falls. I remember what it was like to be young. And it's a great feeling when you think, "Hey, we're gonna make it here." And that's why we really do need to come together, you guys. We all need to come together and work on this. Because without this, we're divided. It's, it's not gonna work. I'm actually pleading for us all to get together and do something. And it's not just, not just me, not just somebody else. We need to work together. You know, and that's where these people with this great experience is out there, that we can glean that information from these people and move forward. I just say thank you for coming tonight, everybody. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thanks, Al. Thank you very much. So we have a motion to do just that, to do some more listening, to do some backfiting, to consider the alternatives that have been brought forward tonight and by people throughout the last few weeks, which would table postponed the last three items on four, five, and six. So...
Before we move on, I would just like to make a few comments, if I may.
Sure.
First of all, thank you all for coming to express your opinions. I appreciate that very much. I, I guess I'll start by saying that I, I think it's gonna be quite a challenge to make any significant cuts to our current budget that will not impact people in our community that benefit from the services and the programs that we offer. We're, we're not having this conversation tonight because the council felt like finding another way to make some more money. The reason we're here tonight is because the number one concern, the number one complaint that I hear from people in Fergus Falls is the roads. It seems like it's always the roads. And I've said it at every, every possible opportunity I've had through the last several years, I've said, "We live in the worst place on the planet where you could build roads." Building roads here is very expensive. They don't last very long. And so people were coming to us over and over again, "Fix the roads, fix the roads." If you go and you look on any, any topic at all on Facebook, top couple of comments, "Fix the roads." Okay? Well, so we were given a mandate, a request to fix the roads. And, you know, we, our tax levy committee works really hard to make sure that we're running a tight ship. Bill Sunmore is a very conservative finance director. We're not spending money wastefully. And frankly, there have been, you know, a lot of misstatements and untruths made to the contrary. And, and all of our information is open and completely transparent. If you wanna sit down and you wanna review the city budget, go ahead. But a lot of the suggestions that we've been given for budget cuts have been frankly unreasonable. And so where the franchise fee came from was because we wanted to respond to all of these residents that were telling us, "Fix the roads, fix the roads." Well, guess what? It's really expensive. We have to get the money from somewhere. Nobody wants their property taxes to go up. So that, that option was off the table. I mean, all of us would get voted out if we raised property taxes. Okay, well, we still have to find money to fix the roads. So there's this franchise fee opportunity. And, and it wasn't necessarily that we saw that, oh, well, all these other cities are doing it, and so we're just gonna follow their lead. No, we saw that as, hey, this is, this is a good idea. This is an alternative mechanism to pay for the roads that, that, that spreads it out, you know, like individual apartment tenants that, that pay, you know, that have a utility bill. Well, now they're gonna be sharing some of that cost that the rest of us are sharing. And, you know, organizations that are exempt from property taxes. Well, you know what? They use the roads, too. They're gonna help us. They're gonna, we're gonna spread the cost out, make it more fair, more equitable. I personally, I think the roads are fine. I, if, if I come across a bump or a, a bad patch, I slow down, I go around it. Because I know that, that our city, you know, might be able to use some of those funds, you know, in, in a better way versus keeping our roads, you know, good enough where you can drive around town with a boiling hot cup of coffee and not spill a drop. I, I don't see that as a priority. We need to maintain our infrastructure. We need to take care of the things that we have. And a franchise fee is the way to pay for it. So, so what I'm hearing is, I hear people fix the roads, but then the same people turn around and say, "We don't wanna pay for it." Well, which ones are gonna be? I mean, do we want, do we want great roads? And then we have to pay for them. And so that's, that's what I'm thinking. I, I'm open to reasonable suggestions, folks. Reasonable suggestions. But, but frankly, a lot of the suggestions on, on suggested budget cuts and the like, you know, have not, they've not been forthcoming. And I, you know, I do have to address specifically the remarks that were made by Mr. Leighton about this being the flyer that went out in the utility bill, being some sort of city council or city scheme. You know, it's, it's, you know, we, it didn't happen with, with our approval, folks. I mean, it was a mistake. People make mistakes. Yeah, it was a big mistake. But if you're reading any deeper into it, into some big conspiracy or something like that, save your breath. Because that's, that's not the case, and I highly resent that implication. So it's about all I have to say on that.
Thanks, Al. And we are gonna move on. I think everyone's had an opportunity to talk...
Can I just have one question? The special assessment on Stanton, what percentage of that is actually paying for the road? Because we have, it was a cost of that improvement of Stanton. Okay? That's a special assessment. So it's paying over the overall cost. What are those citizens, what percentage are they paying for that improvement?
So it's a percentage of the street portion. So the assessment is just based on the street, not the water sewer storm underneath. And I don't, Brian, you may remember the actual percentage. But I, I know it is at least 20% of that street portion. That's the minimum. In order to do it through the PIR program, it has to be at least 20. So I know it's gonna be at least 20. It's somewhat over 20, though, I'm thinking. But I don't know that exact...
That's spread out amongst how many people? But we're not doing 100%. We're doing 60%.
That's over the residents along Stanton Avenue.
I was just curious about the percentage. Thank you.
Yeah, it's at least over 20. 20 minimum.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Dwayne. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to have further discussion about this, further input, to consider these considerations. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Regarding item number one, we need someone to...
Second motion?
Yep.
It's Mr. Hicks's motion.
That's right. We do have a, we have a motion to refer to the H.R. committee.
The H.R. committee.
Do you want to restate your committee, or, I'm sorry, just restate your motion for clarity?
My motion was to have the matter of the flyer referred to the, the H.R. committee to look at, you know, coming up with a policy of sub description, you know, what happened, you know, how we can avert this from happening again.
Sounds good. Can I second it then? Al, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries as well. We'll need someone to introduce the first item, franchise agreement.
Are we able to do one, two, and three at the same time?
Separate.
Let's just do them. I think it should be separate. Let's do them separate. Item number one, Jim, thank you. That item number one has been introduced for Otter Tail Power Company. Item number two is the same franchise agreement with Great Plains Natural Gas. Someone like to introduce that? Thank you, Scott. And item number three is that same franchise agreement with Lake Region Electric Cooperative.
I'll make that in.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We look forward to continue this discussion. We'll make sure that there is plenty of notice when this item's gonna be discussed next. Item number seven, under ordinance resolutions, is a second reading of the ordinance 51, eighth series, relating to an extended interim moratorium on THC product sales. This has been discussed at committee. It's been introduced. If there's any questions, we're from our city attorney. Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight we have bills in the amount of $2,573,763.23. If anyone has any questions, we'll address them at this time. See, now I entertain a resolution.
We'll have a resolution to move.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Scott.
One of the items on the list was for what's identified as lighting at the RTC for $3,448 to Cassette Electric. And I thought it would be helpful to know a little bit more about what that expense was for and how it, you know, how it was used.
Scott, do you wanna explain that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Tommy. There was a request for some additional outlets for different lighting needs and power needs up at the RTC. The specific request came from Otter Cove Tasha Rolfs asked if more outlets could be added so that the festival of lights would not have to use generators for their event that comes up later this month. So the request was basically denied because we didn't have budget money for the $4,500 estimate that we received. Tasha, she actually went to Otter Tail Power, to the Public Relations Department, and they considered the request and felt like it was a worthwhile expense, and Otter Tail Power is covering that expense for those additional outlets. So they'll be able to be used for Summer Fest, Festival of Lights, and anything else up there as a community event.
Thank you. Thanks, Otter Tail Power and Tasha. Thanks, Scott.
That's awesome.
Any other questions on, roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports. There are no reports from staff or administrative officers. There's no old or unfinished business that I'm aware of. Couple items under new business. First is a resolution-
Your Honor, review the golf.
Let's do the golf course first. Scott, take it away.
The golf courses, their lease is up this year. I believe it's January 1. Is that right? Am I-
12/31.
12/31. And so I was communicating with a couple people from different golf courses, of course, and they thought that, or not they thought, they suggested, or I talked about it with different people, and are putting it all for RFPs. And not that I'm not, I'm against the, probably Golf Course Corporation, I guess it is. It's just that to give somebody an opportunity to look at it, it is our entity, and if somebody else wants to go and put a proposal in on it, and then, and of course, they'd have to put a proposal in on it, too. Which I don't think, Jim, have they talked about it at all?
They've been waiting for the city to come back to them with the new contract.
Okay. So-
That's where they're at.
And I think that this RFP system would be good if there's anybody out there that wants to look at that and do something, to give them an opportunity to do it. I don't know if there is or not. I don't, it's just a question I wanted to bring up, and I just thought if the council gave approval to look for an RFP from elsewhere, and of course, the RFP from the golf corporations, I always called the, probably Golf-
The Golf Board, yes.
Board, yeah. So I just wanna look out there, and I'd like to see if anybody else has got an appetite for it before I make a motion for it, to go out for RFPs.
I don't think that's a bad idea. I would second your motion.
Okay. So far.
You'll make it first, though?
I'll make it first.
All right. Nice.
I wanted to have a little discussion, because I didn't wanna, I had no idea, I just, this is something, just I come up with it. I think it's a good business practice for us. We've been in business with them for years, and not that they've done a, they've done a great job. I'm not arguing that at all. It's just to give somebody else the opportunity to look at it, and maybe it's better for us, maybe it isn't, I don't know.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Anthony. Scott?
Just a follow-up question. As you see it playing out, Scott, the restaurant out there is essentially under the contract of the golf course operator, or is the restaurant deal a separate deal?
I'm glad you brought that up. Well, they signed the contract with the restaurant for, is it two or three years? I don't remember what it is.
Three years, I believe.
Probably three years.
And that was with the Golf Board, not-
That was with the Golf Board, and it's supposed to come to the city, too, for their approval, which it's a great, that place is a great place. I have never been there, but I heard it's nothing but good. So I think that should be incorporated into this RFP, that they will be there, too, for the next, till they fulfill their contract. So I'm not trying to kick them or anything, that was a great asset to that golf course when they came in, and they do a heck of a great job.
The restaurant has brought a lot of people out.
It is a good thing. I'm not going after that. I just wanna just, their contract is up, and be with them, and then they'd have to abide with a three-year contract with putters.
All right. So there's a motion in the second to open that up for RFPs.
I mean, I suppose the only question is, do we have enough time? I mean, we're November the 6th today. The contract expires on 31st of December. If we go out for an RFP, you know, do we have enough time? I mean, obviously, we've got time before golfing season starts, but-
Golf season won't start till next April. I would suggest, if that's what we're going to do, that we just extend the contract that they have right now until we learn what-
Till February 1st or something. I mean, that's, that's almost 90 days or not quite, but, right? I think that'd be a, and just extend it all to that one extra month.
And that was another thing they were worried about, was, okay, what happens if we don't get this done by the end of the year? And I said, hey, the contract will just go through.
Right.
The way it is right now, it won't be a problem, so.
I just, I'm just going back. I just think is the opportunity, if there's anybody in the community who wants to look at that, or has been looking at it, it's not that they're looking to get out, or I'm mad at them or anything. It's just something to give them an opportunity, everybody an opportunity to look at it, so we don't think we're just sticking with them people. That's just, you know, it is our entity, and maybe they will, I don't know if anybody will come forward or not, but at least it gives the opportunity. We can't say we didn't try.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Second item is a resolution authorizing the submission of a community energy transition grant. We'll call on Finance Director Bill Sunmore. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel. Yeah, in your packet is a memo and an RFP from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development regarding a grant. It's basically for coal cities. So it is for a number of cities in the state that are dealing with coal plants shutting down. So that's what this originates from. The legislature appropriated $9.5 million. That's divvied up over two years, so their fiscal year 2024 has 4.75 million, and 4.75 million again for state fiscal year '25. Now, it is a tight turnaround on this grant. The grant, the, the RFP was released on October 16th of just last month here. Deed had a webinar on the 18th, and I went on the webinar to see what this was about, so learned about that. And the proposals are due by November 15th. Now, if you know me, I don't like these tight turnarounds at all, but that's why we're before you tonight and saying, what would you like to do? Should we put a grant proposal in? So again, we can apply for up to $1 million for fiscal year '24, and $1 million in fiscal year '25. So it is per city, per year. So we can have two chances to do this. So grant decisions will be made on December 22nd of '23. We would be communicated at the end of the month, December 29th, and then the contract would end on June 30th of '25. So we have an opportunity here. We certainly wanna bring opportunities before you as a council, see what you wanna do. I'm gonna read just a little bit from the proposal, so we know what we're talking about. What kind of projects would this be? So the objective of the RFP, an eligible community awarded a grant under this section may use the grant to plan for or address the economic and social impacts on the eligible community of the electrical generating plant's cessation of operations. So the coal plant, you know, being shut down, including, but not limited to, so land use studies, economic planning, researching, planning, and implementing activities, capital costs of public infrastructure necessary for economic development, and impact studies and other planning activities, enabling communities to become shovel-ready and support the transition from power plants to other economic activities, to minimize the negative impact of power plant closures on tax revenues and jobs. Design two, and then one, two, and three, and then I'll stop reading word for word here, but I wanted to kinda cover that. So design two, one, assist workers at the plant find new employment, including worker retraining and developing small business startups. Obviously, the plant's already closed, those jobs have already, you know, Otter Tail Power did a great job making sure jobs were saved, and, you know, they were still working within the company. Number two, increase the eligible community's property tax base. We can all, we can all agree on that's a good thing, you know, increasing the tax base. Three, develop alternate economic development strategies to attract new employers to the community. So that's kind of the three different things there, so you can kinda see what's eligible. We talked as a tax levy committee as far as what are some potential projects that we would look at. So we have all those planning things in there. We did a lot of the planning related to the shutdown of the plant. We've already done that, went through that process before. We worked with Otter Tail Power on that. We actually received a grant to fund that as well at that time. But a comprehensive plan has been brought up by the city council in the past. That could be an option. Out at the Norgren property, utilities out to that area. Now granted, the utilities are quite expensive, but this could be a million dollars towards the Norgren property utilities. Workforce housing is another one. We hear a lot about the need for housing and, you know, the employers in Fergus Falls, you know, saying, you know what? If there was housing, I could hire more people today. I met with our managers out at the airport, and they were talking about the need for a hangar out at the airport as another option. So that's something we could talk about. The industrial parks, International Drive, we talked about that as well, the expansion of that. And my last thing on the list is other ideas from you. We're here before you because, as staff, we, you know, this is our first council meeting since this being released, so we wanna give you some option to talk about it, so we're just looking for guidance on this. Is this something, one, do you want us to go for this? Claire Beck, even though she's on maternity leave, will work on this with us. We've already engaged Otter Tail Power, so I'm getting some of the background information we need, but if we think we can turn it around, first, if we have a project to go with that. So I'll be quiet, let you as a council talk about that, but just kinda a little summary of what was in the packet for you.
Thanks, Bill.
I just wanna add one thing, Your Honor. The only thing I'll add to that is there's about nine communities statewide that would be eligible for these fundings, or for this funding, so it's competitive, but it's not as competitive as most grants that we would apply for. And we are at a different stage in the process related to our plant than the other people that would likely apply. They're gearing up for shutdown of their plants, whether it be nuclear or coal, and in a lot of cases, they're 10, 15 years out. So they would be more focused on that upfront study and learning the impacts of that closure on their communities, whereas they'd be a good example of a community that's gone through that, we're on the tail end of that, and now, you know, how do we grow the tax base on the back end and go forward from there? So just wanted to know, it's, there's about nine communities that would be eligible.
And just to clarify, too, so first of all, I think we, I think, of course, we apply, right? It's money that can go towards a project. To be clear, I think the intent of the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the $9 million is spread out over those nine communities, so I don't think we're gonna be eligible for $1 million each of the years. We would probably be eligible for a max of $1 million total.
We can apply, but we probably wouldn't get awarded.
The intent is probably $1 million. Yeah, I personally believe that workforce housing is the greatest need for economic growth in our city with existing businesses. I've heard from a number of employers over the past three weeks, that if, like Bill said, if there's additional housing. To speak to Anthony's point earlier about stacking and about using funding, there's a billion with a B, additional dollars this year in housing, and there's a workforce housing program that I think the city should and needs to apply to. We need to utilize these funds. If this, if this funding could be used for either infrastructure, too, or acquisition of site for workforce housing, it could be other grants and funds from the Minnesota Housing Finance Authority. I think that that's, to me personally, that's one of the best things we can do for our local employers.
I think we have a, we have like a number of even infill lots, the city, you know, any lots that the city owns that's got a, you know, a derelict-type building on it, or we've cleaned that site, you know, maybe those are ones that we could infill and get them back on the tax base or the tax roll. You know, as you say, on that workforce housing grant, you know, typically be a smaller house, but, you know, we, obviously, we could subsidize that with, if there's free funds. First of all, I would say, yes, we absolutely should apply. If we don't apply, we won't get it, so.
Thanks, Anthony. Scott?
Given that it's an assumption that we're gonna apply, I think the practical reality is, what is our best shot? You know, what can we actually, what could we possibly apply for, where we've got a viable application? And I think the one thing that's been mentioned of the list that Bill gave us, including comp plan, utilities to the Norgren property, workforce housing and whatnot, would be utilities to the Norgren property. I've seen the proposed plat map for that. There's been, there's been proposals made, or at least some amount of work done to estimate the cost of the utilities into those areas. And so there's, some of that preliminary work is kind of on the shelf. And so to be able to grab that and turn this thing around in less than 10 days, you know, there's a potential project that we could possibly have some success with. Some of the other things, like workforce housing, I don't know that you could put a successful proposal together for that in the timeframe that we've got. As good as it would be, to draft that and put it together, I think would be really difficult to have a successful proposal. But for something that we've already got a good share of the work already on the shelf, if we could grab that and touch it up, or whatever it takes, you know, to make it a proposal so that it can be turned in for here, I think that would be a potentially successful application. That's my suggestion, just for what it's worth.
Thanks, Scott. Do we, yeah, Scott?
I think I should. I have a little privilege to see this before, everybody, so I've been on it with Bill and Andrew and Ben. I have a project for housing. It's a large project to get it going. I've already contacted the owner of the property, handshake the deal kinda on a price to kinda get us going. But one of the, we have to have a description of it, don't we, Bill? Of the property? Have to have a description of what we're gonna do, kinda what we're gonna do with it.
Pretty detailed, yep.
Pretty detailed, and that would become very easily, it's a possibility. But for us to move ahead, we have to make a decision which we wanna do. And I like the Norgren property and, and I, but I also like this housing thing is really a major, major deal we need to get, we need to address. I mean, it's just like they say, there's no housing in this town. We're pretty full. I don't think there's any vacant apartments anywhere. And this would be for apartments. I haven't, all I know is I just, we made this deal last week, and I shouldn't say made a deal, we just talked about it, kinda had a handshake on it, and talked, we're gonna talk about it tonight. That's why the closed meeting is, if we decide to go down that path, we can go in a closed meeting and talk about this, explain more about what's going on, what it is, and, but I think it's a very good viable thing. I think it'll improve our city immensely, so, but it's not just one vote, it's, we need all, so.
I think the, the other property that we talked about some time ago was D'Amica Drive, and I think that was some townhouses. And that was a mix of townhouses and, you know, sort of larger detached houses, so, and I wanna say there was a, you know, there was a plat, a plat for that, as well as a drawing on laying out, so that would be another one for infrastructure of sewer and water. You know, that's somewhat, not quite shovel-ready, but there's detail there, and that's a, would be a concentrated lot.
It's platted off, pretty much, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, um, just thinking through this, but one option would be, it's to Scott's real estate transaction, um, as consideration. Obviously, we're, we're not going to discuss the transaction, um, details in an open session, but we obviously do need to come back and discuss what the council, what, um, what direction the council wants to, to go forward on, on this, whether it's utilities to Norgren property, or whether it's, um, pursuing a different property. One option, I guess what I'm getting at, is we could have that discussion. If the council decides to go that route, we come back out, open that to the public, and then it's public information. And if they don't, then we come back out and determine what, uh, direction we're going to go with the, uh, with the other options, whether it's D'Amica Drive or, um, the Norgren property.
They're all good, they're a good idea. All, all three of the ideas, I think, are really good ideas. I just think we need to probably discuss this one behind, on the, to kind of give the information out, so they can make a better decision, you know, close the meeting and, and talk it through, because it will be discussion of pricing and different things like that, so. And of course, it would all be hinged on getting the grant. If the grant didn't happen, we wouldn't get it.
Any of these, any of these projects would be-
I would make a motion that we apply for the grant. I mean, if, if, if we don't, uh, if, if we don't get it, fine, but if we do, it's money for us to do some things.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that part of that motion, closing the meeting up and finish, talk about the real estate, then?
We make a commitment to have that closed session-
It was right out of my mouth.
As quickly as possible, so we can get back out to the pub-, public session. Are we-
I'll, I'll second that.
Second? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Okay. That motion carries. Um, so what we'll do is, Lynn, any announcements at this time?
Um, yes. We have a big holiday change in schedule, all that.
So, Veterans Day is observed Friday, so our garbage schedule changes. Thursday pickup will be Wednesday. Friday's pickup will be Thursday.
Got it. Any other announcements? So, we're going to close this, uh, session of the meeting to discuss possible real estate transaction pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05. We'll make that portion as quick as possible, and we'll get back to the public session. Uh, so we will be reconvening this meeting at the conclusion of the closed session. We're adjourned for the time being. Scott?
Scott?
So- All right, we will reconvene this meeting in the Fergus Falls City Council. Um, so, Jim, we have a motion. We're going to ask you to change that to a resolution.
We can do that.
Scott, to, you're the second, to pursue the Coal Transition Energy Planning Grant Application. I'm sorry, that's the Community Energy Transition Grant Application, in the area of workforce housing, to pursue workforce housing opportunities, and the city staff is going to continue negotiations on specific properties that will become, um, public, once we, if we submit the application, if we come to agreement and submit the application. Fair?
Fair enough.
Bear with what we discussed in the meeting, in the closed session? All right. Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rooker?
Yes.
Freymer?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Is there any other business to come before the council? See, not adjourned.